Mayor, I'm going to call the roll.
Sure. Brenda, please call the roll.
Mayor ready?
Present.
Commissioner Butler?
Present.
Commissioner Morse?
You're on me, Brenda.
Present.
Commissioner Hattasol?
Present.
Commissioner Estebrook?
Present.
We have a quorum.
Great. Thank you, everyone, for joining us here on our May 5th Tuesday meeting at 7:00. Our city commission meeting this evening. I will do the pledge of allegiance first. Yes, okay, there we go. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, with that, we will move on to our proclamation. We have a proclamation for Manhattan Business Month. Brenda, would you like to read the proclamation this evening?
Yes. Whereas bicycling is a clean, quiet, and energy-efficient mode of transportation. Bicycling is a healthy form of exercise and is a way to incorporate physical activity into one's daily routine. And bicycling can often be the fastest way to travel in Manhattan because of traffic congestion and scarce parking. Bicycles are vehicles, and by state law, bicyclists enjoy all the rights and privileges of motorists to use the public roads free from harassment. Now, therefore, I, Usher Ready, Mayor of the City of Manhattan, Kansas, do hereby proclaim May 20th, or May 2020, as Manhattan Bike Month and encourage all citizens to participate in this outstanding endeavor and to observe all safety measures, including wearing a helmet and obeying all traffic laws. I do have a comment.
Is there, I don't, I don't believe there were anybody that sent in comments on behalf of the proclamation.
The, uh...
Was there any comments, Brenda?
Yes, the staff liaison provided me some comments. He wanted to let everybody know that due to the current situation, city staff and the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee are working on plans to hold the typical Bike Month activities in the fall, so the public should stay tuned.
Great, great information. It's a beautiful, beautiful day, and it's going to be beautiful weather for a while, so everybody should take advantage of it. We are still allowed to go biking and walking, so please enjoy the weather and get some exercise at the same time. It is public comment time on the agenda. I don't, I didn't receive any public comments. I'm not, Brenda, was there anybody that emailed any public comments?
No, Mayor, there was not.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm, I'm, I'm having trouble hearing Brenda. Is her mic on? Is she?
Yes, I'll try to speak a little closer.
Not loud like everybody else.
It's through a different speaker, I think, is what it is. Okay. Time for Commissioner comments.
Um, Mayor, I just, uh, Linda Morse, I just wanted to, uh, remind me and the commission of the mission of the city. And I, the mission of the city is to sustain order and protect public safety, promote public health, preserve the built and natural environment, and enhance, protect public safety. Did I say that? Promote public health, preserve the built and natural environment, and enhance economic vitality. And so I just wanted to, I just remind everyone that there's a balance we have to achieve, and it's, um, uh, it has to be reminded sometimes. I just am, appreciate the patience and the, uh, the people in our community. I think, uh, we are all stressed, and, uh, it takes, uh, a lot to keep this up, this sheltering. And, uh, so I just want to say it's completely natural to have some of the, uh, just unease that we have felt. I have felt this same kind of thing at living in Northview in the past, when the water level would rise clear up to the top of the gates. And I feel that kind of, it's kind of a veil or a gray area that kind of befalls me whenever there's a crisis. So, uh, that's how I've been feeling a bit. And so I'm starting to come out of the cloud, I guess. I'm, I'm able to accomplish more. And, uh, I am still staying home because I think it's the right thing for me to do, to avoid crowds. But I just wanted to compliment the community that we've been doing as well as we have, and certainly the leaders, the, of the, all the agencies that have come together to make this the most success we can. So, uh, having said that, that's enough. Thanks.
Thank you. Other comments?
Yes, Mayor, I have two comments. And again, I, I want to thank the community as a whole for all the small and big ways individuals have stepped up and helped out, helped each other out. Uh, last, last meeting, I listed off several people and organizations that are doing some amazing work. And I just wanted to highlight, uh, one that I, that is new, a new group. Um, they're called Man, or Mutual Aid MHK. Uh, it's an organization that's completely citizen-driven. Uh, the shorthand of what they're doing is they're designed to build, uh, or to build the bridge between, uh, people wanting to offer help or assistance in the form of volunteering or transportation, whatever, services, financial gifts, with people in our community who are in need of some type of service or financial support. It is a grassroots network of concerned community members, uh, each offering what they can to support those in need. So if you're wanting to help or offer something, it might even just be time. Uh, that's another organization that you can get connected with, Mutual Aid MHK. The second comment I have is, in January, uh, city staff began talking about the, they rolled out a presentation around, uh, the Organization Excellence Initiative, the OEI. And during that presentation, I made the comment about diversity in the workforce, and I voiced my obs- obs- observation of how few women were present at that meeting and invisible leadership of the city. But over the last few weeks, uh, like many of you, I tuned in at 4:15 to those live briefings, um, from the Riley County Health Department. And sometimes I would watch those briefings with my daughters. And during one of those times, and it happened often, but one in particular stood out to me, and I just wanted to voice that observation again, um, but in a different way. And in that Zoom briefing, my, my daughters, my little girls had the opportunity to see Julie Gibbs, the county health officer, the Riley County Police Department Captain Aaron Fedline, and the City of Manhattan PIO, uh, Vivian Musello, and then a sign language interpreter, Susie Stanfield, all leading the community and during a crisis. And that, of course, reinforced, uh, in my girls that they can grow up to be anything, do anything, uh, and lead others in difficult situations. So since I was a bit critical in January of having so few women in leadership visible to the public, I just wanted to voice this ob- observation that, um, and thank everybody for doing their jobs.
Thank you, Aaron. Other Commissioner comments?
I just want to mention, you know, the animal shelter, still working hard. And if you've, you've got an animal missing, I see on the next door thing, people trying to chase down a cat or dog that got away. Uh, they might wind up at the shelter. Of course, it's not open, but check their website. They've been putting videos of strays that they picked up. And you can just call, identify the animal, make an appointment, and, uh, and pick it back up. I think there's a, a dog or a cat down there right now. And there's still plenty of animals for adoption. So if you're stuck at home and you need a friend, the animal shelter has got some for you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Nope. Okay. Okay, I have a, well, Ron, would you like to speak a little bit about COVID or about the flood or anything? Not flood, the rains. We don't have a flood.
Don't need a flood yet. Sure, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Commissioners. Just kind of a quick update, uh, on our COVID-19, uh, as part of our daily update. We're still holding at 55 positive.
It's not, you're speaking into the mic, maybe?
Is that better?
Yes.
Maybe.
The, we're still holding at 55, uh, total positives. We've had our second day in a row of no new positives, so that's been a, a good sign. We're still monitoring 21, uh, active, uh, folks. And we've had, uh, 30, we have 33 tests that are pending, and we have a total of 535, uh, negative tests so far. Uh, we just want to also bring folks' attention to, uh, the, and thank the Manhattan Area Chamber of Commerce for the support they're providing the business community. And they have a, a business reopening question-and-answer hotline. And that number is 785-776-8829. Or you can email them at info@manhattan.org. Again, that's info, I-N-F-O, at Manhattan.org. Uh, they're doing a great job. We did, uh, distribute all of the, uh, 2,000 masks that we had available for the business community yesterday. So, uh, we've, they have started a waiting list. So if, uh, the community has, uh, masks they'd like to provide for that purpose, like they have been for the Westview Community Church, which is also, also still operating on Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and Saturdays, to, uh, contact them, uh, with any quantities that you might have. As an organization, uh, as Wynne said, the, uh, animal shelter folks are, are working hard, uh, even though the buildings are closed to the public. Uh, all of our facilities will continue to be closed to the public through May 17th. Uh, and then we will reassess prior to that relative to, uh, uh, facilities being closed to the, to the public. Uh, however, uh, most of our employees are telecommuting. Uh, they're working remotely. Uh, they're also, uh, utilizing city vehicles and responding from their home or work out of their vehicle during the day, responding for inspections or different types of interactions that, uh, they may have. All of our field personnel are primarily working as split crews. So, uh, that means that there's less congregation, uh, of those workforces at their, uh, remote build, remote sites and shops. Uh, there, our facilities are inadequate, uh, for them to be able to accommodate large groups safely. So we're working our shifts. That also keeps, uh, if there was an outbreak, our exposure to, uh, a larger group down to a lower-risk hazard. So, uh, with that, Mayor, that's all I've got at this time.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Ron. We typically have briefings, and of course, we have not been able to do that. We won't be able to do that until, um, we are done with having Zoom meetings and come back to our normal presence. So if there were any other meetings that you were at, any of the Commissioners that you would like to bring up, this would be a perfect time. Okay. Uh, seeing none, I do want to say, um, I think the Manhattan Area Recovery Task Force has been doing a nice job. You know, we organized it, and, um, they will be meeting again this Thursday. I believe, is it at 11:00, Ron? I'm not sure.
I think it's at 2:00, Mayor.
2:00, Thursday at 2:00. For those of you that want to tune in, it's on the website as well as Facebook and on Channel 3, uh, to hear the discussion. And it's a good group of, uh, individuals, and they are taking the information back to, uh, their respective organizations or anybody else that, uh, has, wants to, um, have some, has concerns or questions or want to be part of that dialogue during this reopening phase. Uh, a lot of, I think some restaurants opened yesterday, and some are going to wait till June or July as they figure out at what level they want to open up and make sure they have all the measures in, and, uh, just a little bit more cautious and, um, looking for employees or what it's going to look like in the future. Uh, I think the ones that have opened up, I, I'm positive, I'm glad, I'm happy that we are thinking about moving forward in several of these organizations. And as Phase 2 and Phase 3 come up, you know, we will go in a phased manner and look at the data as we move forward. The Manhattan, um, MHK, um, Clinical Task Force has also been a part, big part of that conversation, along with the Riley Health, uh, Riley County Health Department, Governor Kelly's, um, rollout plan, reopen plan. So all of it's been working well, as far as I know. I haven't seen anything, but I know there's a lot of people out and about as well. One of the primary things that came out of Governor Kelly's, um, um, comments was, of course, removing the stay-home order and having a phased, uh, operation for businesses in the 105 counties. And Potawatomi County, Riley County, and DeGeary County did work together because of the task force and have, uh, similar orders in place as far as businesses, especially restaurants at 50% and, um, the social distancing piece. A big part of this is the mitigation that we put in place now, such as you still need to wash your hands as often as possible, wear face, uh, coverings when you're going to places, and, um, the six-feet distance, uh, as much as you can, uh, as often as possible. In some of these areas, the face covering has become an issue in the sense that some are wearing them and a great majority are not. The face coverings are not necessarily for the person that's wearing them, to protect the person that's wearing them. It's to protect the people that are outside, uh, that you come in contact with. Uh, it's been, uh, a key factor with CDC and KDHE. When you are speaking, coughing, or sneezing, those droplets spread. And, uh, there's thousands of droplets that we don't even realize that as we're speaking to people. So if you are choosing not to wear a face mask, that's actually causing more harm to the individual that has a face mask or other individuals. The individual that has the face mask is actually protecting you. They're not doing it to protect themselves. It's so that when they're speaking, it's not going to go out onto somebody else. But there has been, uh, there have been several communities that are trying to make sure more people adhere to it as a mitigating strategy. We want to keep our numbers low. Uh, so since we don't have briefings, I, I wanted our city to consider, uh, having, uh, a recommendation to have an ordinance in place to require face coverings. Um, and the reason I say this is because wherever we go, people are outside a lot more in our stores, grocery stores, wherever you see them, without face coverings. And, uh, it's not, um, it's not, uh, healthy as when we talk about public health. And, you know, we've had issues when, um, cultural shifts happen, such as they did after 9/11, and we started taking our shoes off at airports and having little plastic bags and not putting locks on our suitcases when we send them off into the air carrier. So this is a similar measure for, as a safety precaution. And I would like for us to consider that at our next agenda item. Uh, and that is something that I feel we need to do because it is, it is a public health issue, and I do want to keep our numbers low. And we are going to have people moving around a lot more than what we anticipated. And this will help us as we transition into Phase 2 and 3 and as more people come into the City of Manhattan. I think it, um, it's our responsibility to make sure we are taking, addressing public health as well as the economy in our community.
I want to make a comment about that. I, I don't have a problem with face masks. I go out and wear one for probably three reasons. You know, one, uh, I don't want to sneeze on anybody and scare them. Two, it might make other people feel better. And then third, I don't have to shave when I go out. And, uh, you know, that, that's part of the three reasons. But I'm absolutely against the city ordinance on this. I mean, we can put best practices out there. Uh, I just see that as an absolute nightmare. There's a number of people that, you know, refuse to wear face masks. Uh, that's their choice. You have businesses, I think Menards said, you know, if you're going to come in here, you're going to wear one. Uh, that's fine. If you don't have one, they'll sell you one for a dollar. Otherwise, you don't come in. Uh, that's their choice, and I'm 100% behind that. You don't have to shop if you don't like it. But a city ordinance demanding face masks, that's out of control. And I'm not going to support that. I don't want to see it on the agenda.
I understand. I do think it's a good to have a discussion. These are similar discussions when we had about, uh, having a no-smoking ordinance as well as vaping. Um, you know, there was, there was a lot of conversation before we implemented anything. And even then, we were, we were in a better place after we did it. Uh, so to me, this isn't a personal decision. I have to get groceries. I, we need to eat. So if I'm wearing a face mask, I'm protecting the individuals in front of me or people that are in the store. But if others are not wearing it, then I'm, I can bring it home to my husband. I can, uh, take those droplets and move them on to other people. And that is not, it's not so much about the person that's wearing them so much as, like you said, when you sneeze, you don't want the droplets going on to everybody else. I understand there might be resistance to it, uh, but I do think it's something we need to consider and have a discussion about at length, uh, instead of just a five-minute discussion.
Uh, Mayor, I'd be willing to discuss it. I'm, I'm not, I think it would be difficult to achieve, um, given the number of people that already don't wear them. So, we're, you're kind of in, it, it's, uh, there's a rebelliousness taking place, uh, rugged individualism or whatever you might want to call it. But, uh, certainly, it's worthy of discussion. And I know that there's a discussion that is happening around the country. Some, some cities have, have, you know, implemented it as an ordinance or requirement. Uh, some have nothing, some are, you know, they're just in between. So, I, uh, anyway, having said that.
And enforcement will look different in many areas. But I will say, I, I might need to talk to RCPD about this, and that would be part of the discussion as well. With the no-smoking ordinance, I'm not sure they gave out citations. I'm not looking at people being reprimanded. People were very compliant with the stay-home order. Uh, and those that weren't for the, uh, where you have to have gatherings less than 10. I don't believe anybody went to jail for it. I believe RCPD or police enforcement was gently reminding them that, you know, this is something, um, that, that we have in our community, and it's, uh, one of the state orders. So I don't see people, uh, you know, just, um, the enforcement piece being, uh, harsh as we are thinking. I think we don't give our, but people do comply to things that are required. Uh, a great majority of them do. And this is for the protection of other individuals. Mark, I saw you wave.
Well, the, the key to any of these ordinances is you got to have the consent of the governed. And, and we, I, I twitched because of people still on their phones when they're driving and doing stuff, and, and that's against the law. And, and so, uh, the people that aren't wearing masks now, unless you're going to arrest them, probably aren't going to continue to wear masks. And, and, and that's, that's where I'm not sure. We can, we can talk to the police about it. But, um, yeah, I, I'd like to sure think that this thing is on its way out the door with the hot weather coming here. And so if, if we see any kind of a uptick over the next couple of weeks, then we can sure have the discussion maybe. But, well, I, I wouldn't vote for it simply because at some point, people are going to rebel against rules that they don't think are necessary and don't make enough sense to them. And if the cases keep going down, I don't think people are going, there's going to be, yeah, you'll get 50, 60% of the people to do it because they'll, they'll abide by any, any law. But there's a lot of people that they want to know that the law makes a lot of sense. And I, I'm not sure if we, we, without some kind of a, a worsening of the situation, I don't think we're going to be able to solve that very well.
Yeah, and like I said, uh, thank you, Mark. It is worth the discussion. Also, when we did the no-smoking ordinance, um, you know, I don't know the numbers of people that were getting, um, uh, lung cancer in our, in the City of Manhattan because of secondhand smoke. I don't know those numbers. What we did know is that it is happening and that there was some, um, precedence in our community, in the, in the nation as well. And when the Surgeon General and all of them are recommending, just like the surgeon said, "We recommend you don't smoke, but it's your option." The thing with this is when you sneeze and cough and your droplets are going on people, there is some, uh, research, a lot of research on it. But again, it's worth a discussion. Um, Aaron, would you like to chime in?
Um, it seems, I would be interested in if there's a recommendation from either the Health Department or the Task Force, um, then if that, if they think that the city commission should be weighing in on it, then that would rise to a level where I'd be paying attention more. Uh, I, I tend to agree with Mark and Wynne and, and that, uh, it's going to be really hard to enforce. If it's a recommendation and not a, if it's a resolution saying we want people to do this, then it's, uh, that's one thing. If it's a, if it has any kind of consequences to it, that, and the, the enforcement component is really not feasible, uh, I don't see that even being, uh, something we should do. But I, I don't know that it needs to come from us. The state, this, this, I'd like to hear input from the Health Officer. And, and really, i- in the state of emergency, they're the ones that can issue these types of guidelines, uh, for people to comply. But if, once that expires, it might be, it might be on us. But, uh, again, regionally, I don't know that compliance is going to happen.
So, uh, like the smoking ordinance, uh, as a local community, as a city commission, we do have home rule on these things. And there are other communities, other city commissions and city councils, which are doing it, uh, not necessarily by the local health officer. Uh, so she would do it for the entire county. I'm looking at the City of Manhattan as the mitigation process in this pandemic. Um, I think it's worth the discussion and seeing how RCPD and all of them would look at it. There are other communities doing it. We would not be the only one doing it. Uh, Prairie Village is looking at it. They've already introduced it, and their city staff is looking into it. There is Alabama, um, Birmingham, Alabama. There are other communities that are looking into it. We can modify it to what fits to our community. Uh, but this, uh, leave it to yourself. Do what you choose. If you, if you feel like wearing it, wear it. If you don't, that's okay. Uh, I'm sorry, that is being irresponsible and unacceptable. So I'm looking for another way to do this because it's not about the individual that's choosing not to wear the mask. The individual that is choosing not to wear the mask is doing a lot more damage to the other people they come in contact with. And, um, I'm not saying we're going to have 100% compliance, uh, but I do think there is room for discussion in our community with the stakeholders at the table, like we do vaping, like we did vaping, like we did the no-smoking ordinance, like we did texting. Now, nothing's going to be at 100%. Even the school's, um, speed limits, those are not at 100%. Uh, so, uh, I think there are a lot of individuals. We have to go to get groceries. We have to do a certain amount of shopping. And, um, it's, um, it's shocking how many people are not following it, and I think that's a distresser. Um, I, I'm hoping the commission wants to look at it at least.
I'd like to mention, you know, it takes three Commissioners to put something on the agenda, not just one.
That's why I'm asking.
I think it would be interesting to just survey the commission. You know, how many people want to put this on the agenda? And I'm affirm, no.
Yeah, that's why I'm asking.
No.
I've already stated that I would, uh, I think it should be discussed.
I, I guess I get to be the decision here, but, uh, I, what I don't want to, we can have the discussion, but I, I wish that we would be having more of a discussion about economic and budget concerns than, uh, going into the public health type of realm. With, I, I feel like this is going to take on a political element to it and divide people even more, uh, not contribute or, and it really, in my opinion, isn't our place. Uh, again, it's, it's the medical professionals to tell us how we should be the most healthy we can be. Um, but if, if, if we want to have that discussion, I, I'm not going to stop it from happening. So there's your third for the discussion to have, uh, on a future agenda. I would really hope that it comes with some recommendations from that task force or the, or, uh, the Health Department, um, before we jump in front of them. So I'm, I'm in no rush to do that.
Yeah. Well, thank you. I think that's three. But I, I will say, uh, public health does result in a good economy at the same time. We don't want to increase our numbers. And all the recommendations have been towards, uh, the mitigation strategies such as stay home, wash your hands, face coverings and such. And our businesses are also doing similar things. The businesses are also reluctant on what's the responsibility. The businesses are also reluctant on what's the responsibility of the consumer and the customer. And I think that falls on us to take care of that. And I do think it is a local city commission issue at this point. And I, and all of, I've gotten advice from the MHK Clinical Task Force. All of them are just so close to saying required, but again, you know, that, that falls on each city.
A city ordinance flies on the whole face of that task force where we tried to get a community approach where you have Gary County, Pot County, Riley County, everybody doing the same thing, and then you have a city ordinance that says something different, and now Riley County Police has got to worry about that inside the city limits but not out of it. That, that's lunacy, absolute lunacy.
That, that's what we did with smoking.
I'd be curious if, can we agree that if the numbers keep going down, that it's probably an unnecessary thing unless Julie Gibbs and the governor and whatever, they, they pass some kind of thing that says this is not what, this going back to work and people doing their thing with or without masks. If that is working, then I, I would like us to think that it's adding another layer when what, what is working is working. I just don't think we need to go there. If, if there's some kind of a rise in things and it becomes a bigger problem, that's one thing, but if it stays one or two cases and keeps dwindling, like you said, as the weather gets warmer, there's absolutely no reason to try to crack down harder because that's the kind of thing that people are not gonna like, and it will become very political, like Aaron suggested.
Well, I don't think people have liked me from the beginning from this, but the point being, it's public health. And we will have two weeks till our next meeting, so we can see on them. So we don't have a meeting until every other couple of weeks. I do think it's worth a discussion and I do, I believe strongly that people need to wear those face masks or face coverings, and nobody's doing it right now. Most people are not doing it. I won't say nobody, but there are a lot of people that are not truly concerned about it. So with that, I will move on to our consent agenda. Anybody, items on the consent agenda are those of routine and housekeeping nature or those which have previously been reviewed by the city commission. A commissioner may request an item be moved to the end of the general agenda. Anybody have comments or questions about the consent agenda?
Mayor, I think, I, I would just go ahead and move that we adopt the consent agenda.
And I didn't think, I didn't see any public comments on the consent agenda. So a second on that?
One second.
Oh, Ron. Thank you, Mark.
So I just wanted to clarify that we did remove an item from the consent agenda from its original publication. So that would have been item E regarding the Metropolitan Planning Organization. That was removed by both administration and at the request of the MPO. So that'll come back to you at a future time.
Okay. Do we need to modify the motion then? Are we good?
No, I think.
You're good.
I think we have to modify. I moved the, I was, my, I don't know. I would move the approval of the consent agenda minus item E if it happens to be on your agenda, and it was on mine. How about that?
I'll still second.
Brenda, would you please call the roll?
Mayor ready?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Commissioner Hattasol?
Yes.
Commissioner Estherbrook?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Okay, going on to the first, we have a public hearing this evening. Ron, I'm gonna have to have you walk me through the public hearing. The public hearing is to consider the Community Development Block Grant for 2020 to 2024 Consolidated Plan, 2020 Annual Action Plan, and 2020 to 2024 Analysis of Impediments to Fair Housing and Authorized Execution of 2020 Subrecipient Grant Agreements and the 2020 CDBG Grant Contract. And with that, we'll have a public hearing.
And the presenter will be Eric Cottrell.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm going to share my screen here. So tonight, we're looking at those three documents that were just mentioned, and you had a work session about a month ago on April 7th over these items. Tonight is actually doing the, the public hearing for HUD. And so I'll quickly go through this presentation. As you know, HUD is the Administrator of Community Development Block Grants, and that's all directed for, focused towards the national objectives to provide ease and safe sanitary housing and suitable living environments and to create economic opportunities. Manhattan has been an entitlement city for 10, well, since 2010, and we utilize the vast majority of our allocation to benefit low and moderate income households and neighborhoods within the community. The map that you saw the last time, the pink areas, well, first, the yellow is the city limits. The pink areas are, as per census data, those census block groups that are 51% or more of the population is below 80% of the median income. So those are the, sort of the target areas, although some of our programs go citywide. For example, our Housing Rehabilitation Program is anywhere in the city that that homeowner qualify, income qualifies for assistance. So because we're an entitlement city, every five years, we have to update our consolidated plan. That five-year consolidated plan consists of the strategic action or the strategic plan. It has the citizen participation plan, the analysis of fair housing, and a number of other required documents and certifications. And then we also do the annual action plan, which this year will be the 2020 Action Plan. And that covers the, the program year of July 1st, 2020 to June 30th of 2021. The action plan that we're proposing for this year was developed with input from residents throughout the community and our social service agencies, as well as other city departments, agencies. And it provides a very detailed summary of how we're gonna use the 2020 monies. And as you know, because we are a entitlement city, it's based on a computation that HUD does every year. Our, our allocation changes every year, and it went up slightly from last year for 2020. The annual plan for 2020, we have four basic program areas. The first is Program Administration, Planning and Fair Housing Activities, that is limited to 20% of our allocation. That covers Christina's salary and all of the required HUD logistics, that we, all the reporting and, and monitoring that we do, as well as our fair housing activities that we do. Second one is our Housing Rehab Program, which again, we, we assist low-income homeowners to be able to stay in their house so that their houses meet housing quality standards. And we, they're, they remain part of our affordable housing stock in the community. And we also obey things like lead, asbestos, and radon if, if necessary. And we have our Public Services category. It's typically capped at 15%, but because of the pandemic, HUD has released that cap, both for the 2020 program year, as well as for the CARES Act funding, and for the 2019, our current 2019 program year, which is about to end on June 30th. We currently have five agencies that we fund. Housing Credit Counseling, MESEI, Ponte Minto Health, Kansas Legal Services, and Sunflower Cosse. And the last category are public facilities and infrastructure. And we had planned this year to relocate the Bread Basket Cooler out of the Douglas Center parking lot to make room for parking improvements down the line, and then to make some sidewalk and ramp pedestrian improvements at Leavenworth and Fifth Street. As I said a month ago, those two projects are, are kind of in the air at the moment. We don't know if we'll be doing them in the 2020 year or if we'll be using this $185,000 to go into pandemic response, but we'll be figuring that out in the weeks to come. Just a quick cap of the process. Again, we started this last fall consulting with the community and the various agencies in town to develop ideas on how to use our 2020 money. In December, we solicited proposals from the various agencies in town, and then in January, the Social Service Advisory Board reviewed those and gave us input on prioritization. Then we, and Christina primarily wrote and updated our, our three plans, the consolidated plan, the annual plan, and the assessment of fair housing from February to April. End of March through end of April, we had our 30-day comment period, and then on April 7th, again, a month ago, you, we had the work session for you to review the, the draft plans. And tonight is for the commission to hold that public hearing and then approve the plans. We need to submit them by the 15th for HUD to review, so that we can then start our program here on July 1st. The next three slides I'm gonna go through are not actually tonight's action item, but I wanted to update you just on the pandemic stuff. As you know, we'll get $328,000 plus in the first installment of CARES Act funds through HUD. HUD is recommending that we go ahead and approve our five-year consolidated plan and the 2020 action plan, and then come back in a few weeks or months and amend our citizen participation plan to incorporate that five-day comment period of a faster timeline, and amend the 2019 action plan to identify CARES Act funding and describe kind of broadly how we propose to utilize that funding. Just a reminder, CDBG funds cannot duplicate benefits from other federal, state, or local funds. They're considered funds of last resort, although we can use them as our local match for any federal funds that might require local match. Since the April 7th meeting, City Staff has been in contact with many of our local social service agency providers, as well as USD 383. And thanks to Commissioner Easterbrook, he kind of helped get that discussion going with the school district. But again, to begin discussion on identifying projects and uses potential for this COVID funding. Just quickly, the eligible activities that the COVID funding could be used for, and you've seen some of these before, building improvements, we could rehab facilities for treatment clinics. We can rehabilitate or construct group living facilities to, to centralize patients that are undergoing treatment. We can acquire or lease a hotel to expand hospital capacity. We can provide assistance to businesses, particularly to manufacture medical supplies. We can provide short-term working capital to businesses, particularly that are at risk of losing jobs held by low and moderate income individuals. We can provide assistance to microenterprises that provide medical, food delivery, cleaning, or other services to support home health and quarantine activities. And under our social services, again, the 15% cap has been removed, and there's a number of things we can do there with regard to testing and diagnostic locations, increasing capacity of targeted health services, provide equipment, supplies, materials, assist with delivery of meals, meals on wheels to quarantined individuals or individuals that need other assistance to maintain social distancing. And then finally, under planning and capacity building, we can use some of this money to actually gather data and develop emergency response plans. So again, we've just completed the 30-day comment period. Tonight, the commission's actions are to hold the virtual public hearing, and then approve and authorize submission of the consolidated plan or 2020 action plan, and then the analysis of impediments to fair housing, and then authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute our subrecipient grant agreements, and that's for those five social service agencies. And also then approve the grant contract with HUD when they send it to the city. So with that, if we can answer any questions.
Eric?
Yes.
During that 30-day public comment period, was there much public comment?
I'm not aware that we had much at all. Debbie Nast did identify an error in one of the comments that we had within the consolidated plan on, and Christina is going to correct that. Otherwise, I'm not aware of any comments that we got during the 30-day comment period. Good.
Questions for Eric?
I'll just comment real quick. This is Aaron Estherbrook. I am just happy, I, that there, that conversation with 383 is on, has begun, and I think that there is quite a bit that we, as the city, can do in concert with 383, and just wanted to highlight that. Thanks, Eric. Thanks, Christina, for getting that going.
Other comments?
Just by way of commenting, this is probably the second or third, whenever it comes before us, I always express concern that the Northview area is not included in the focus of the CDBG. It seems that because it's based, has to be, what I'm told, has to be based on the census tracts. And the area, this area is big and diverse and, but no more so than some of the other areas of town that includes the Country Club and, you know, depends on what's around it. But just to say that, I think there are quite a few low income, low and middle income people in the Northview area, and I'd like for us to work to find a way. It's clear that this program is built, designed for bigger cities, where a census tract makes up a whole big area of like-income people. So this is, we're just, you know, we, we reached 50,000 in 2010, and so we're relatively new to this. And I'm, it is important, I, I am so pleased with the, the distribution of the money that we get from the, through this program, and that we're able to use it in some very meaningful ways for this community. So I'm very supportive of the program. I'm enthusiastic about some of the home repair, home improvements that, that are made. And so having said all that, I, I support this, this program and the city's, I support adopting it.
Yeah. Other questions or comments for Eric? No, I think this is very necessary. I am looking forward to the discussion about from the CARES Act, the funding from that, because we definitely need those resources, and I look forward to that discussion as well. I think CDBG has always been very much part of our community, and we hope to continue that with the projects as well as far as housing and for low and middle income folks that need public transportation, childcare, quality housing and such. So this is very instrumental in that. If there are no other questions or comments, certainly I take a motion.
Well, just, just a reminder, you probably need to formally open the public hearing and then close it. And I don't think we got any comments submitted or any people RSVP'd to speak during this virtual hearing.
Okay. And they would have mailed in, right? If they had something to say as well?
Correct.
Okay. Seeing none, close the public hearing? Is that appropriate, or are they supposed, there, nobody's coming online or anything like that, right? Okay, thank you, thank you. Whoops, thank you. With that, is there a motion to authorize this?
Mayor, I move that the city commission approve and authorize submission of the 2020 to 2024 Consolidated Plan, the 2020 Annual Action Plan, and the 2020 to 2024 Analysis of Impediments to Fair Housing. of impediments to fair housing, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the 2020 sub recipient grant agreements and the 2020 CDDG grant contract with HUD.
Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. Brenda, please call the roll.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Commissioner Haddasol?
Yes.
Commissioner Estabrook?
Yes.
Mayor Ready?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Okay. On our general agenda item, first item is Lee Mill Village, amend real estate agreement with the Manhattan Area Housing Partnership Resolution authorizing the sale of property, approved development agreement. And our presenter is, is it Jason? I don't have it in front of me.
Yep. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay.
Jason Hilgers, deputy city manager. I'll go ahead and share my screen as soon as I get permission to do so. Then we'll bring in, we have Jill Jacoby with Manhattan Area Housing Partnership and Brett Ballou with Schultz Construction will also be available for questions. Bill Frost is also with us, legal counsel. We have just a quick presentation to get through, just to give you an overview of the action item this evening. Everybody seeing that okay? So in 2017, the city purchased 35 lots and roughly 10 acres of common ground at a tax sale. This was the Lee Mill Village PUD. It was a failed development. William Crabtree was the original developer of roughly 10 townhomes in that area. He had obviously about 45 different lots he had planned to build on, 35 remained vacant. We had covered six years of special assessments and taxes, just around 600 grand prior to going to that tax sale. We decided to purchase that area knowing it would be difficult for another developer to work through all the challenges of homeowners association, the existing PUD zoning, and the onsite infrastructure that was going to be due in terms of specials and taxes. We've also realized what's in the ground is not capable of fulfilling future projects. So the lots that we ended up purchasing are all here in blue. 34 through 52 are the lots that we have proposed and have agreed to in a real estate agreement with the Manhattan Area Housing Partnership to purchase for 18 duplexes and a clubhouse. We've been through a lot in terms of a process to get to this point. We've rezoned it. We have worked with the homeowners association to extract this area from their guidelines. This will be a complete transfer, not only of the lots, but the common ground surrounding 34 through 52 as well. Most recently, we received a request from the housing partnership and Schultz Construction to reduce the price another $5,000. Our original agreement identified a $20,000 acquisition price per lot. Again, total of 19 lots, part of this acquisition. So we had a $380,000 real estate agreement. We were going to participate at $10,000 per lot and basically take the acquisition price along with $190,000 of our utility money and pay off the specials that are outstanding on each lot, which is roughly 30 grand per lot. Some of the conversation we had with MAHP and Schultz, there have been increases in costs and they tried to distribute those evenly amongst the investment partners in this site. Roughly $300,000 in increases. Each of the development companies have taken about $100,000 off their fees in order to try to make this work with the tax credit allotment that they received. And they approached the city with possibly participating at another $100,000 to make the project affordable and able to start this summer. So that would essentially lower the purchase price to $15,000 per lot with the city picking up an equal share of 15,000 per lot to pay off the specials. The development agreement is a separate item that was one of the contingencies in the real estate agreement. The development team have identified some onsite public improvements, the streets, sanitary sewer, fire hydrants, roughly in the amount of $224,000 to be made on the site. These will be public improvements that will be inspected and have been approved from a design standpoint by the city engineer. Again, these will be the city specifications and part of our inspection process. The sale of the real estate allows the agreement for 19 to 34, 35, sorry. So there'll be 16 remaining lots after this real estate transaction. $6 million development will occur and return the property to the tax rolls. We'll release ourself of over half of the special assessment annual exposure, dropping that from 110,000 to 51,000 per year. We roughly have about nine more years left on what will be 16 remaining lots versus 110,000 for the 35. And again, I, this is speculation on my part, but I do believe with this redevelopment, we will generate more interest. If you've taken a drive by the property, it is a rough area. It is not all that attractive. If we see these 18 duplexes fulfill 34 through 52, I believe it'll spur more interest in those remaining 16 lots. So the action items this evening were, have prepared an amendment to the real estate agreement where the city would pick up that additional 5,000 per lot. Also on the agenda is a development agreement, which allows the developer to move forward with the installation and financing of those public infrastructure improvements. The city would have no participation in that public infrastructure. And then there's a resolution to confirm the real estate sale to the Manhattan Area Housing Partnership. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have, as well as the team that I mentioned and introduced before I started. Mayor?
One question on that infrastructure project. That's 224,000 for streets and sidewalks and things of that nature. Wouldn't that normally be special taxes?
It could have been when they they could have petitioned us for that and had them, you know, distributed over the next 20 years. They didn't want to pursue that, so they agreed to pay cash for those and finance them on their end on their own. I think the tax credits actually can help with some of that, so they'll be able to leverage those for some of that infrastructure, but.
Okay. Well, I see that as a little bit advantage, although I'm not real happy about, you know, paying additional 5,000 per lot. Not not real pleased with that at all, especially since they already received a waiver on, you know, all the water hookups and all that. Seems like, you know, it's getting to the point where we're almost giving these things away.
I would just comment and reiterate, this is not an ideal situation that we've been in from day one. And I do believe the request is genuine by way of explanation over the last six to nine months and working with both Brett Ballou at Schultz Construction and Jill Jacoby at MAHP and the Excel Development Company that will be part of this. We've had a lot of meetings about the terrain and the infrastructure out there as well as the site. And I know they have done their due diligence on realizing the credits. So again, we know this is not ideal. We're in a really unique role as a landowner. We've obviously supported and been a part of what the city can do on other tax credit projects, but never before have we been in a position where we own all this property and are trying to return it to the tax rolls.
Jason, just one more question. Will there be, will we be asked, will this cost the city more at any stage coming up? Or is this the last, as Wyn described, the last time that we would have to take a reduction in what, you know, our expectation as the seller?
My understanding, Commissioner, is they plan to close in June and start construction. Both Jill and Brett can comment on that though as well.
Okay. So Jill, will you be asking us to waive anything else or are you ready to build?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
We will, we will be ready to build and we don't have any, we will not be asking for anything else at this time or in the future that we know of.
That's important. Thank you.
Other Commissioner comments or questions?
Yeah, I just, I have a comment in regard to the process, I guess, and not so much. It's just very troubling that so much has been asked for, but from the city without a ton of transparency, at least at the commissioner's end of what this process. And I know that Jason had mentioned, you know, this is not ideal. This is a unique situation. And so I don't, I don't, I'm taking that for what it's worth and I understand what we need to do to potentially move forward on this project, but in the broader sense of a precedent setting idea, this is not the way that we, or at least I think the city should be doing business or with a different independent housing authority, with any nonprofit community housing development organization. There, I would like to see a lot more information about what the, what's going to be involved in the building. And I understand that that's, you know, it's going to serve seniors, it's going to serve people 55 and over, median income 40 to 60%, and that's wonderful. I'd like to see the data on that and what it looks like, but we don't have that unfortunately. Maybe you can answer some of those questions. Is this meeting the need? We've, as Commissioner Butler mentioned, previous commission allocated waivers on the the hookups of 36,000 or more. And now this is another 95,000 change in ways. It's a lot of money and not a lot of transparency. And I just want to see that change going forward. Another reason I would be an advocate for that housing advisory board, so some of this can get flushed out there rather than just between you guys and us at the commission table where there's a lot of unknowns and that's not, it's not necessarily your fault. There needs to be a better process around this. So I just wanted to weigh that in. I don't hold you personally or anyone at fault for that. I think we as commissioners should work towards making this process better for everybody. And so we understand those needs.
Jason, sorry. Jason, could you do me a favor? We've been at this, we've had this discussion, I think for over a year and a half. Could you fill in a little bit for public knowledge about where, why we are trying to make sure these 19 lots are sold and how long we've had it and how we came to be at the place we are at right now? As briefly as you can, but still getting all the information in.
Sure. And I may have Bill help me with that. You know, in 2017, which four years ago, we approached the governing body about buying this land. We knew we had infrastructure in the ground that was not being financed. We had picked that financing up for six years and as I mentioned, about $600,000 was invested by the city before we even got to the tax sale. We knew how complicated the site was and we knew how difficult it was going to be for anyone. And we had talked to numerous developers and builders about their interest in the property and we weren't hearing a whole lot. The townhome concept, even at Four Winds, which was another failed development in the community just a year or two prior, sold a lot of lots at the tax sale. It's a product that struggled in Manhattan. There's a lot of ideas and concepts that have floated around that just didn't materialize. And in this case, there was just a lot of infrastructure in the ground and it was a big, big bite to chew for any developer coming in. We felt like if we went in and worked with somebody out of the gate to get some momentum built, we could work with the homeowners association, as I mentioned, work with zoning, work with the infrastructure, and ultimately get this back on the tax rolls. I credit Tim Schultz and Brett Ballou really for coming forward and they've leveraged other tax credit projects in town and they've worked with the Manhattan Area Housing Partnership. But it's been four years and we've worked through a lot of different angles to try to get this point, to this point where we could have the investment made, return it to the tax rolls and as I, as I mentioned earlier today, make some lemonade out of some lemons because it's been a bitter taste in our mouth for over a decade. And it's, it's just a failed development and you can allow those to sit there and our bond and interest would have been 110,000 for the next nine years. And instead of that, we tried to salvage this, market it, get it to a point where it could redevelop.
Yeah. I'm sorry, Commissioner Estabrook and Commissioner Haddasol. This was going on for a while and otherwise we've had lengthy discussions about it, but there was a lot of information that may not have been in this packet that you got in front of you today.
Well, even, even the mayor, I just want to, I've read through all the packets and information going back as far as public knowledge is available to me. This process can be better and I want this to be successful. I want affordable housing to be successful. And it just, this is a, we haven't ironed it out in a way that makes it smooth and transparent for people that are in the community that it, we, well, the worst thing we could do is, is have this or any entity fail and then that sours the pool for the entire mentality of affordable housing. So I just want to make that clear that going forward, maybe we can do things differently. And that's where that housing advisory board and other, other things that we can do. And I appreciate all the work Jill does and I just, I want to see us expand that ability and make it more transparent for everybody.
Thank you. Mark, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I'm going to hold my nose and vote for this for a couple of reasons that if we can get it off, some of that off the tax or get it back onto the tax rolls towards generating money instead of continuing to lose 50, 60,000 a year, that's, that's almost enough by itself to vote for it. But yeah, if we can cut down the amount of money we're paying for specials for and getting absolutely nothing, that's very good. And this is the one sort of thing I think the city can do when it comes to affordable housing is try to facilitate stuff like this. It's, it's at a reasonably low, well, even though it keeps getting, going up, it's turned out as a reasonably low cost way for the city to help provide some affordable housing. And so with, yeah, so we're, there's a lot of things that are going to cost a lot more money to provide affordable housing, I think. And this is one that, yeah, if we can get that back on the tax rolls, generating some income, get it looking, the neighborhood looking nice and decrease the city's overall exposure, I think this apparently is the best thing we're going to get at this and at least we've got something instead of a continuous money pit.
Agreed. Other comments? Yes?
Several years ago, when we decided to purchase this at a delinked property tax sale, I don't think, I don't, I don't remember knowing what we were going to be getting into. And maybe it could have been predicted, but I, I'm interested in closure on this. And maybe it could have been predicted, but I, I'm interested in closure on this and getting it, it back onto the tax rolls, as has been stated. That's got to be the critical point. I'm interested in not getting into something like this again, however. But, you know, ultimately, this was a bad investment that went south, and we're kind, we're cleaning it up. It is important to remember, and I have to remind myself, that there are 16 more lots after this that are still, because it was a big, good-sized development, and even though they aren't large buildings or large residences. So we're going to be talking about this again, and Aaron, you'll get to see the whole thing all over again, for 16 lots or 15, maybe one or two of them aren't buildable, I don't know. But, but the best thing we can do is just get rid of it. And, you know, Junction City's stuck with a bunch of lots, and it, it just happens. And all, we didn't get into it the way they did, but we have our own issues here. So it, it seems like something we should do to just move on.
Agreed. I did not see any public comment on this in, in my emails. Do we want to hear from anybody else? I agree with all the commissioners. I think from the time that we've been discussing it, we, we were fortunate to have Jill, as well as Tim Schultz, and come forward with a plan of some kind, because we tried and tried and tried to get people to bid on it, and nothing was happening. And we still have 16 more, like was mentioned. So yeah, I think this is something, we really don't have too many options, if we want to keep moving forward and trying to get rid of the rest of the tracks on this. So with that said, do we have a motion on this?
Mayor, I move that we authorize the city administration to finalize, the mayor and city clerk to execute an amended real estate agreement with Manhattan Area Housing Partnership, approve resolution number 050520-A, authorizing the sale of real estate property to MAHP, and authorize city administration to finalize and the mayor and city clerk to execute a development agreement for the construction of public infrastructure. Streets Project ST 2006, sanitary sewer number SS 2008, and fire hydrants WA 2012, all pertaining to Lee Mill Village Lots 34 to 52.
Second? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. With that, Brenda, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Commissioner Haddasol?
Yes.
Commissioner Estabrook?
Yes.
Mayor Ready?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yeah, my vote won't matter, but I'm, I'm gonna vote no, because I've lost confidence in the MAHP, because, you know, the first presentation said one thing, and I don't like the goalposts movement. Don't like it at all. So no.
Motion has carried four to one.
Okay. We'll move on to our next agenda item. Guaranteed maximum price, 12th Street from Moro Street to Blumente Avenue, reimbursement agreement with hotel at 12th and Blumente. And Jason Hilders, our deputy city manager, will be representing this evening.
Thank you, Mayor. Jared's gonna work through adding a couple more panelists here and dropping Jill and Brett. So we'll have Barry Schmidt with McCown Gordon, as well as Mark Bashamp with Olson Consulting. We've been working on 12th Street for several years along with the Aggieville redevelopment. We hosted a work session with this governing body back in February to get opinions and input on the type of improvement we would go ahead and bid out for 12th Street. We have the inverted crown as part of the, the concept, which is a brick street. And I'll share my screen here, and we'll get into that PowerPoint. So as I mentioned, we went through a process to select the type of improvement we wanted to see on 12th Street. This is our team, McCown Gordon, we hired as a construction manager at Risk. Olson and OHH have been our civil and landscape architects. And the courtyard by Marriott at 12th and Blumente, we also have an item on the agenda this evening with an agreement to reimburse the city for a water line that we will construct as part of this project. As I mentioned, we had some concepts in front of the commission a few months ago. The feedback and input were to go with the brick streets between Moro and the alley, and then return to a pavement section with concrete north of the alley to Blumente. We would still do brick within the sidewalks north of the alley, adjacent to the Aggie Lounge and Stickles and the new hotel. The, the area between Moro and the alley obviously would have enhanced improvements with shade trees and bench seating, some possibilities for outdoor dining. Again, we won't be constructing the outdoor dining, those are just there for display purposes. We would have to enter into permits with any adjacent owner or business to do that. But we have additional seating and shade structures that are also part of that streetscape. Here's a view from Moro, looking north, with So Long to your right, Tanner's off to your left. Some of those improvements that we anticipate with this project. As I mentioned, February, we received that feedback on how to proceed. April and May, we've been working with McCown and Olson on getting that finalized design out for bid, as well as drafting and getting concurrence from the hotel for a portion of the water line. 52,000 reflects more of just the water line from Moro to the alley, where it'll connect into the new hotel. They'll reimburse the city for 85% of that cost. There are more costs associated with the water line, because we will continue that water line north, and actually board underneath Blumente and connect into existing infrastructure. That water line, then, will serve both the hotel, but it'll also create some redundancy within Aggieville, and accommodate our businesses in that district a lot more than they are today, with newer infrastructure. GMP cost summary put together by McCown Gordon. We have an overall total of $2,043,395. You can see the categories that were bid out, the earthwork, which is a lot of the pre-work that takes place to remove any existing infrastructure. We come back then with our utility package, and our concrete and landscaping, the masonry, and then some of the more detailed items there with traffic control, and the electrical components that will be part of that streetscaping plan as well. Project timeline is set to start on May 18th, which is a little less than two weeks away. A bulk of the construction will be completed by October of 2020. We will have some remaining sidewalk and streetscape that'll wrap the hotel and down Blumente towards Cocobolos. That'll happen probably closer in the wintertime, or in the following spring, as the hotel reaches completion. We will close 12th Street between Moro and Blumente, but we will keep those sidewalks in place that access all the businesses. 10 parking stalls south of the alley will be removed and not replaced. So a lot of those patterns for pedestrians will continue to be accessible, not only during construction, but after. Folks will need to find other places to park to walk in to that area. More, deliveries will occur on Moro. This will be similar to what occurred during some of the prep work for the hotel. The alleyway was under construction there, between the Tanners and the hotel. So a lot of deliveries were coming off Moro. This will have to start up again and continue through October. The traffic plan is also here and within the packet. You can see on Blumente, we cut out and created a temporary left lane turn-in there. So the left-hand turner westbound on Blumente will be able to turn into the gas station. We'll close that turn-in on 12th Street and 12th Street itself, but we will remain with some access there to the gas station and the liquor store during construction. We still need to work out some details with some property owners to reconfigure those three stalls adjacent to Stickles and the gas station convenience area. But we hope to gain that in the next couple of weeks that'll allow people still to park there and access Stickles for their dry cleaning. But as I mentioned, this road closure will occur May through October of this year. Financing, the city did issue a bond resolution, project authorization in May of 2019 for 2.3 million. We anticipate using a combination of water and storm, along with potential excess TIF, and then bond and interest supported by future EcoDevo dollars or other revenue streams within that bond and interest fund. The new hotel adjacent to this project will generate a quarter of a million dollars a year for a 20-year period. It'll be a sizable investment in return on the tax increment finance district. If you recall, some of our early projections had anywhere from 15 to 20 million being generated within the district over the 20-year period. The hotel is significant at anywhere from a third to a quarter of that total revenue. We also anticipate this debt rolling in with the parking garage and structuring a 20-year debt service, which will allow us then to align both of these projects with that future revenue from the tax increment finance district. We have new market tax credits on the horizon for the garage, which will then allow more money from the TIF to be used in streets, in streetscape. Economic Development Sales Tax, we've talked about over the past, even the Point 3 had an allocation for Aggieville, and it will more than likely be part of future discussions for either a renewal or a replacement of the Economic Development Sales Tax. We have had some early conversations about CARES funding. There's a number of federal programs that are looking for investments in these distressed areas due to COVID-19. We feel like we have a shovel-ready project ready and teed up, and feel like this could assist with that overall debt service. So action items this evening include accepting that GMP and authorizing construction, as well as authorizing that development agreement, which is a reimbursement for that water line for the hotel on 12th and Blumente. Be happy to answer any questions at this point. As I mentioned, I know Barry Schmidt is here with McCown Gordon, as well as Mark Bashamp with Olson, if you have any questions of them. Mayor?
Thank you, Jason. Questions for Jason? Mark? You're on mute.
Got you on mute, Mark.
650,000 for the decorations, I can't remember what the word was.
Streetscape, yeah.
Yeah. Wow. There's, that's, that's hopefully not the very top of the line on everything that is theirs. Is there, is there no way to make that $500,000 or something a little less scary, since that's easily the most expensive part of this whole thing? But I know you gotta make things nice if you're gonna do them, but that seems really nice.
So we have a breakdown. I asked our consultants to, to have that. I could go dig it out of my files if we want to look at it. When we came and looked at those three scenarios in February, we, we kind of showed an A, B, and a C. B and C had less of those amenities, knowing that's really where you're gonna cut cost if you're gonna get into this thing. We seemed comfortable with going with A at that point in time, so that's what they bid out. It, we're at a point, obviously, where we're ready to start. If we want to dig back into those numbers, and, or if the commission has a majority, just says, hey, we only want to spend X, we can go figure that out as well.
I was just curious, maybe one of the people with McCown or, or the Olson guys can, can kind of talk about what, what, what part of that is, drives up the cost so much?
Barry, you want to take a stab at that?
So I want to, want to clarify the numbers just a little bit. There are some other costs that are included in those numbers, so just be aware that they, they, those aren't the true subcontractor numbers and dollars that are being spent. There are some fees and contingencies that are, are rolled into those line items, just for sake of simplification and clarification there. The overall, I, I'm gonna have to rely a little bit on Mark Bashamp as well to, to chime in here on the design of things, but can you clarify which specific item you were asking about?
Let me share the screen, Mark. I think I, when we, I'll show that split again.
Under the breakdown of the GMP, the, well, yeah, the landscaping. And that's, that's my big question is, which of the, which of, what, what's driving the cost of the landscaping to be the, easily the most expensive thing we're doing?
Sure. Yeah. So the, probably the largest component of the landscaping that's included in there is actually the street pavers and sidewalk pavers.
Okay, that includes the pavers.
Yes, that number includes the pavers. So that's, that's not just a pure landscaping number as well. There are also some site amenities, bench stones, sun shades, some of those other kind of above-ground items that are, are really kind of, yep, thank you, Jason, that bollards would be included in there that kind of keep the cars on the road, as well as retractable bollards at the end of the street. So, so really, I would consider this everything that's from the, the street paving level and up is what would be included in that landscaping number.
Okay, yeah. I, I guess the, the pavers is probably the big part of it. The concrete for the site would just be the exposed concrete, and then the concrete under everything, and then all of the landscaping stones. And, okay, that, I can understand how that would get a lot more expensive than that. I was thinking, it's like $650,000 for trees and plants, that seems high, but with the rest of that, it's a whole lot, makes a lot more sense.
Yes.
This not only includes this area that you're seeing on the screen, but we turn the corner, and, as I mentioned, head towards Cocobolos on Blumente. So we'll, we'll have a similar look and feel on the north side of the hotel, and then in front of Popeyes, Starbucks, and Cocobolos.
Are there other questions for, from other commissioners? Mark, did you want to add something? And Mark Rishon?
No, he covered it. Barry covered it. I was making sure that he had the brick was in that, so.
Jason, just one, one comment, because people are gonna ask about, you know, how we're gonna finance this. I know you went over it, but I guess the big question everybody's mind, no property tax impact, providing, you know, that these various funds are available? And then, you know, this was sort of rolled up in that sales tax thing that failed, and so there's no need to add sales tax, assuming that everything else works, the TIF and all those kind of things?
Yeah, as I mentioned, some of the debt financing on the full 30 million that's anticipated for down, for Aggieville, and, and we've talked about this before, it's either through the renewal or a replacement of that sales tax. So we would, we would be looking for some of that to be kicked towards Aggieville. The TIF is gonna generate anywhere from 15 to 20 million in actual revenues, which, from a debt service perspective, you're gonna be able to issue about 11 or 12 million and have it covered by that revenue stream. So clearly, there's a gap. There's about an $18 million gap. We believe with new market tax credits generating a little over 3 million, we might be able to leverage even an additional 2 million from the CARES side. In talking with Rebecca Robinson up at KSUIC, we, they've been in touch with EDA, and there's some, there's some real possibilities there. So that's another 5 million. We do think there's, again, a 10 to 15 million dollar gap that, from a sales tax perspective, economic development purposes, has been my push for the replacement tax, which generates 65 million over 10 years at our normal rate of return, that a portion of that could be pledged here towards Aggieville. Aggieville was Aggieville was a big part of that Point 3, as well as, you know, North Manhattan, or I'm sorry, North Campus Corridor, the Levy, Douglas Center, Airport. So we had a joint maintenance facility, so we had a number of projects in that. If we go back out for a replacement or even the renewal with the county, we're going to be looking at those same projects. We've had this discussion for two, three years now at budget. We know we need additional revenues to see these projects forward. To sit here and say that they won't have a property tax impact, we're going to keep working our hardest to get options in front of you and the, and the community to avoid that. It is our goal not to have these projects financed by property taxes. But in the state of Kansas, that is the default because that's what you all can control. All those sales taxes that we're talking about via the control of the voter. We'll keep asking the questions and putting them out there and looking for your support to do so. But if they don't pass, then we have to start making decisions on what we will do and won't do, or what we will fund with property tax or not.
So, because it's safe to say there's, there's enough funds right now to incrementally do 12th Street, but by the time we get to the garage, I mean, I might vote yes on this and no on the garage if other things, you know, fall through. Like, in other words, if we don't get the economic development tax renewed in some form and we end up with a 15 million shortfall, I don't want to see any property tax come on this. But I've always saw this as we can take incremental bites, but we may have to slow things up at a certain point, but we're not at that point right now. Is that safe to say?
It is safe to say. Through TIF, new market tax credits, and a potential CARES grant through EDA, I believe there's enough to do both 12th Street, the garage, and Laramie. After that, it's going to get difficult because the TIF will pick up 12 million and as I mentioned, another 5 million in the queue for those new markets and a grant application that'll get us to 17, 18 million dollars. And that's really the total right now we have under design is about 18 and a half.
Okay, so that would tell me we're not overcommitted yet, and that's what I want to be sure we don't do, that we stay within there. And when it comes to crunch, where all of a sudden the money's not there or the EcoDevo renewal tax fails, then, then so be it.
Yeah, you know, I think I'm comfortable with this, but I do, I don't know how this year is going to look as far as any financing, not only this year, but even next year and maybe the next two or three years. With sales tax, property tax, we'll see how that comes in on May 10th and a little bit after May 10th. But the state is also going to be in a big hole next year and this year. So for us to completely recover, it's going to take us at least three to four years. All of those projects are going to have to have a different type of timeline, is what I'm thinking. The grants, I don't know how they're going to look. The federal government has given, they're working on their fourth or fifth stimulus packet right now, but that is taxpayer money, so somebody's going to have to pay for all of that in the end. And so these are things that we need to move slowly, but this is something that, you know, I think it's okay to do for now, but there are other projects that have a bigger budget that we need to look at a little bit more closer and critically. I will say, there was a public comment from Dennis Cook. I don't know if everybody has read it, so I'm going to read it out loud. Is this a good time to do that, Ron?
Sure.
I have it in front of me. Okay. So this is Dennis Cook, Aggieville Business Association Executive Director. The Aggieville Business Association Board of Directors is 100% in support of the 12th Street redevelopment project. This is the first step in the revitalization of our vibrant historic business district. We are excited to begin the improvements that will lead us to a more pedestrian-oriented urban shopping and dining area. Our goal is to be a catalyst to promoting the general and economic welfare of the city of Manhattan. We love MHK and thank you for your consideration. And that was the only public comment I received. With that, is there a motion?
I would move that we accept the guaranteed maximum price in the amount of $2,43,395 for the construction of the 12th Street improvements and authorize city administration to finalize and the mayor and city clerk to execute a Phase 2 agreement in an amount not to exceed $2,43,395 with McCown Gordon of Manhattan, Kansas, for the 12th Street and Blumond Avenue improvements from Blumond Avenue to Morrow Street, AG 1901, and approve and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute a reimbursement agreement for a water line from Morrow Street to the alley with the developer, with the hotel developer at 12th Street and Blumond.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Brenda, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Hattasol.
Yes.
Commissioner Estabrook.
Yes.
Mayor Ready.
Yes.
Commissioner Butler.
Yes.
Commissioner Morse.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a lease agreement amendment, purchase agreement with Larry J. Sneges, is that how you say it? Revocable trust to expand the City of Manhattan BioSolids Farm, CIP number WW189P and WW201P, First reading of charter ordinance allowing the city to purchase geo bonds to fund the purchase, and resolution authorizing the issuance of those bonds. And Randy Dewitt will be the Assistant Director for Public Works for Water and Wastewater will be presenting this evening.
Okay, thank you, Commissioners.
It's working when you share it, Randy. We're seeing it, so.
Okay.
If you share the PowerPoint.
I will give it one more try.
And then just go full screen once you...
Good to go there?
Actually, it's showing in presentation mode, so maybe just pull up the, just exit the presentation mode and do...
Let me see if I can zoom in here.
There we go. That looks good.
Okay. All right, Commissioners. Thanks again. My name is Randy Dewitt, Assistant Director of Public Works. Just going to talk a little bit about this purchase agreement we have with the Sneges Trust for the expansion of our BioSolids Farm. We also have a charter ordinance that will, will need to be adopted in order to proceed with some of the financing with this project. And another item that's going to be associated with is an amendment to an existing lease agreement we have with the Sneges Trust, so that we can commence with farming operations in the year 2020 and proceed with utilizing one of our tenant farmers to farm that property instead of the, the farming management for the Sneges Trust. So I think you guys, you've all seen this map in your packet, that's just an overview of our BioSolids Farm with the, with the yellow, yellow properties being city-owned property, the red properties being leased, the Sneges Trust property, the orange, the orange land being leased property from Star A, and the blue being Track 2, which is another Sneges tract that we're looking to purchase with this purchase agreement. So a little bit of background on our BioSolids program, some of the principles and regulations that we work with. And just to start off with, talking a little bit about our, our wastewater process, and it's basically split into two, two streams of, of treatment with, with the liquid treatment process being what gets discharged of the Kansas River and the BioSolids process, which, which ends up with treated BioSolids being applied to ag land. You know, we call them BioSolids, but I want to note that these BioSolids are 97% water, so they're actually a liquid sludge. And these solids, these BioSolids go through a anaerobic digestion process in order to stabilize them before application. We have two application seasons where we apply BioSolids to the surface, generally in the spring, from February to May, we'll apply before seasonal planting. And then, again, in the fall, after harvest, we'll apply again whatever, whatever we may have reserved in our lagoons on the BioSolids Farm to try to empty those for the next year. We have, we have two ways of applying. Typically, we surface apply, which basically we're spraying it directly on the ground. And occasionally, we may have to directly inject the BioSolids into the ground. There's a certain set of criteria that, that would lead us to have to do that, and I can get into that in more detail if you, if you'd like, but I'm going to keep moving on. So the next component of the, of the program is really, you know, application rates, and we've got two options when we, when we determine how much we're going to apply. Default for KDHE is two dry tons per acre. That's a, really a, a rate that is more applicable to other municipalities that may not have the, the means to go. It's, it's basically a, a minimum that you can, you can apply without having to provide a lot of justification through complicated calculations, which we'll talk about here in the agronomic rate. The second means is, is applying at an agronomic rate, which is calculated, cannot exceed that agronomic rate, and that is basically a function of crop type, crop yields, and soil nutrient levels and BioSolid nutrient levels. We, we test the soil once a year in order to determine how much nutrient is in the ground prior to, prior to planting the following year. We do that once a year. And then on the BioSolid nutrient level testing, we actually have to do that quarterly. And so we're sampling the BioSolids that are in the storage lagoons at the farm. Some other, other considerations are mostly environmental considerations that are specific to our site in our efforts to be what I would say environmental stewards of, of the property and of the Kansas River. We have to deal with conditions where there's a high groundwater table at our farm. There's also very sandy soils, which both of those combined to lead to high infiltration rates. So it's, it's very easy for the applied BioSolids and the nutrients within them to percolate through the soil and get to the groundwater. So the way we run our program, in a sense, is, is somewhat conservative in the fact that we're, we're trying to protect the environment because we have a pretty fragile ecosystem here. So just talking a little bit about how things have changed over the years and why we need to look at purchasing additional land. You've seen this chart in the memo or in, in previous presentations, essentially showing the growth of BioSolids production from our wastewater treatment plant over the past 25 years, focusing on the last 18 to 20 years, where we've actually doubled the amount of production of BioSolids, starting in 2001, which is, which is the last time we expanded the BioSolids Farm up to 2019. One of the, one of the points you want, we want to talk about here is when we expanded the wastewater treatment plant in 2012 and added biological nutrient removal, it made the process much more efficient in terms of, of removing solids from the liquid waste stream. And so the characteristic of the, of the BioSolids also changed, so not only are we more efficient, we're producing more BioSolids, it's also more nutrient-rich. So getting into some, some reasons and land resource needs and why we are looking to acquire the leased land. And the primary reason for this is, is quality control over the farming practices. Mentioned that, you know, one of the factors in determining how much, how many, how many gallons and we can apply to a, to a certain portion of a, of a crop field. Quality control of the farming practices leads to higher yields, and higher yields leads to maximized application rates. We've, we've dealt in the past with, you know, the cooperating farmer with the Sneges Trust has been a little lackluster as far as the yields that they produce. So it tends to make, make management of the BioSolids program a little more difficult when it comes to farming this, this particular piece of property. So we would like to be able to purchase that property in order to prove the quality of the farming that goes on there to help really make the management of the program a little bit easier while considering some of the environmental factors that we talked about a little bit ago. Really just a, a simple graphic to talk about, you know, how increased yields leads to increased agronomic rates, which when you talk about agronomic rates, really what we're talking about is, you know, the amount of nutrients, the nitrogen and phosphorus that are, that are taken up by the, by the crops, and then the increased application rate. I did want to, I did want to note that it's not necessarily our goal to, to be able to apply more and more and more BioSolids to the ground. I mentioned, we're, we're trying to be stewards of the environment, and what we would really like to do is, is avoid scenarios like we've had in the past four to five years where the farming practices have been so substandard that there have been little to no yields. Like I said, it really puts our, the management of our program in a bind because if there are no yields or little yields, we essentially have to overapply to other, other portions of our farm, or we have extra BioSolids that won't be able to apply because the agronomic rate will be low enough where essentially we can't, we can't maximize the use of that particular property. So moving on, we've got cost considerations as well. Currently, we pay $100 an acre just for the right to access the property. We know in conversations with the current manager of the property, you know, if they were to own that property moving forward, they're going to increase those rates from $100, $100 an acre per year to up to $250 per acre per year with an escalator every five years. So by the end of the 20-year period, which we would, you know, theoretically enter into another lease agreement for another 20 years, we'd end up paying approximately $300 per acre by the end of that agreement. The other cost factor is revenue sharing. When we lease the property, we do not get to share any of the revenue with the owner. As far as when we own the property, like we do with about 240 acres of our own property, we get to share the revenue 50/50 with the tenant farmer. So there's, there's a revenue sharing component to figuring in the cost of purchasing versus So again, talking about the cost of purchasing versus lease and factoring in, you know, the increased, the increased lease rate and the escalators for the next, for every five years, for the next 20 years, we're looking at paying out about $1.3 million over the course of that 20-year agreement. Also looking at potential revenue losses up to $1 million. And then there's also the, the unknowns, which I don't really consider an option, but you know, the cost of noncompliant is, you don't even want to talk about it, but there is a dollar amount associated with that, and it's, it's not a small one. We've, we've been in noncompliance before 25 years ago, and it's certainly a situation that we would like to avoid. And then, of course, the cost of purchase with this, with this agreement is $2.2 million. The other, the other one thing I want to talk about, purchase versus lease, is obviously the fact that if we continue to lease this ground for another 20 years, we obviously won't have anything to show for it at the end of the 20 years. We won't have an asset and under our control. And if we don't buy the land now, really all's we're doing is we're pushing this down And if we don't buy the land now, really all's we're doing is we're pushing this down the left, down the road for other staff, other commissioners to have to deal with. And it's certainly not going to get any any less expensive to purchase land in the future. As far as why we need to acquire the additional ninety nine acres, which is track two. And that ninety nine acres is about ninety acres worth of actual agricultural land that we'll be able to apply to. But we know that the bio solids production at the at the plant is going to continue to grow as the city grows. So we're going to have to find additional places to apply land. We talk about, you know, the default rates and how we can go past the two dry tons per acre default rate. And we can actually go up to the agronomic rate, but it it's it's still could be, while we could be in compliance, it may not necessarily be good for the environment, so we need to be able to have additional land to apply to. The other item here is we need to be able to rest portions of the farm. And with any finny agricultural practice, it's always good to rest, rest farmland. That's the same, same is true with the application of bio solids. We'd like to be able to rest certain portions of our farm occasionally. And the other component to this ninety nine acres, it's contiguous to the existing farm. And any, as we expand, it's preferred to be contiguous to the farm because the cost of extending infrastructure that it takes to apply bio solids just to be able to go next door and expand that infrastructure next door as opposed to having to take that, those bio solids half mile or a mile down the road. Is a substantial substantially lower cost. So talking about some other costs, if we if we don't procure this land, the the main thing I would like to talk about is is if we don't have land to apply this bio solids and we have to start contracting out for a contractor to go and haul the haul those bio solids off to a different area to apply. I mentioned before, it's essentially ninety seven percent water. And the cost of hauling millions and millions of gallons off site to apply somewhere else is very expensive. Some of our peer cities like Junction City and Lawrence, they typically have to hire a contractor to do that application. And it's, it's basically a six figure per year significant expense to do that. Whereas our operation is is essentially the most economically feasible type of way to dispose of the bio solids. So that's really all I have on on the bio solids program and the actual purchase agreement itself. Next thing I want to talk about a little bit is the lease purchasing, the financing for this property. And Jason might be able to chime in on this if I get anything wrong, or maybe even Bill Frost. But we're, we have essentially three options to finance this purchase as as defined by bond council. General obligation bonds is the preferred means, it's what what we usually do to purchase projects or to finance projects such as this. We have utility revenue bonds and then lease purchase agreements. Utility revenue bonds and lease purchase agreements typically have a higher risk associated with financing, and they also have higher rates, so that's why the preferred option is the geo bonds. Typically on utility projects for the city of Manhattan, if it's over three hundred thousand dollars, particularly in the water and wastewater side, we're going to look at financing with geo bonds. So that's water treatment, water distribution, even the sewer collection system and the storm sewer. Typically for a wastewater treatment project, we'll use a K, a KDHE loan. If it's, you know, they have by far the lowest interest rates and it's the best way to finance a project. Unfortunately, SRF loans do not cover land acquisition. So again, we talked about geo bonds, they're the lowest risk, lowest interest rates, so that's what we wanted to proceed. Unfortunately, as we went through this process, it was brought to our attention that state statute does not allow geo bonds to be used for wastewater treatment facility improvements that cost over three hundred thousand dollars unless it's approved by an election. The one exception to that would be any first class city. You can use home rule, home rule power to adopt the charter ordinance, and that way we can remove that monetary limit as well as the election requirement. So really, at this point, you know, we have several action items here, and as discussed before, we've got the option to approve the land purchase agreement as well as a first reading of the charter ordinance. Approve a resolution of intent to issue the bonds pending the approval of the charter ordinance. And then the aforementioned amendment to a current lease agreement. Our current lease agreement with the Sneagus Trust expires at the end of this year. And as we go through this purchase agreement process, we have to have a means to farm that land this year. Typically, typically, our agreement is only for access for applying the bio solids. So this would amend the agreement not only to allow us to obtain a tenant farmer to farm the land. It also expands it to the track two property, so we will actually be able to apply bio solids to the second tract this year. And then obviously, future items would be a second reading of the charter ordinance, which would be in the May nineteenth meeting. It would also require a sixty day protest period for the charter ordinance that would go through June first to the July thirtieth. The effective date, if we approve the first reading today would be July thirty first, and the purchase agreement has a closed date of September one. So with that, I'll take any questions you have.
Thank you, Randy. Are there questions for Randy or? I think Rob is also on the line if anybody has questions for Rob, Randy or Jason.
We also have Abdu Darar, our environmental compliance manager. He's our, he's our PhD of agronomy who oversees the bio solids management program, so. This is his his baby for the past twenty five years, and he takes a lot of pride in it. So if there's any technical questions on the bio solids process, he's the guy.
Randy, I think it would be helpful to remind all of us about the special environmental nature of this wastewater treatment plant compared to a lot of the others in Kansas. I need to be reminded of that sometimes.
Okay, well, as I mentioned, in in two thousand twelve, we were in the process of wrapping up this expansion project. And it was twofold, it was not only to increase the capacity but to add biologic nutrient removal, which is a state and federal requirement now, and we were, this is before my time here, but administration and management and the city commission at that time was very forward thinking, and we were one of the first states to first, first cities in the state to really take the initiative to upgrade our facility before it was actually a requirement. You know, our, our plant is very high performing. We have, we discharge a wastewater effluent that is, you know, stands essentially. I mean, it's, it's better than the water that it's being discharged to, I would say. The the solids reduction and the the BOD reduction and and the the performance of the plant since the improvements where the nitrogen and phosphorus is now a an effluent limit on a permit, it performs substantially well. The, I don't know if that really answers what you want to know about it, but I mean it's.
I think it's just an outstanding model. And I, and for, for all of the communities, I just wanted you to, especially new commissioners or new people to the community, that this is an important way for us to proceed into the future as you have spoken to the that original effort.
Thank you, Linda. Are there other questions or comments?
I do have a question. I think we're headed in the direction of the general obligation bonds. There's a statement that I, having said that, there's a statement that says the monthly sewer use rates established by city ordinance have have been developed at the cost of this land acquisition project included in the forecast for the payments. And so that, if we were using utility bonds or this other method, and no, no matter which one of these three we pick, that would be a true statement, that the wastewater rates have been included this particular project that we're talking about tonight, the land acquisition and the project.
Yeah, the, the current forecast includes two CIP projects, two, one, one to purchase leased land and a second one to acquire additional land. They are in the forecast program that technically is a ten year bond. We're actually proposing to use a twenty year bond, so. There, there, we went through a significant rate modification last year to try to help offset some shortfalls we had in revenue. These, these, these are definitely a couple of large projects on the wastewater treatment side between the purchase of the of the late leased land and and growing the bio solids farm as well as some future capital improvements to you know, we've got improvements to to add a third lagoon as well as other improvements to the wastewater plant probably in the next five to ten years. And so, yes, those rates were were adequate at the time to to finance this project. Combined with the fact that we're looking at a twenty year versus a ten, it's only going to help the fund balance.
Thank you. That was important.
These adjusted, you know, water rates, and they keep going up three, five percent every year on all three categories, you know, sewer, storm water and water to fund the CIP projects, and you can see how much the expense is on this, and of course, we have to do it because we can't be out of compliance with the environmental concerns, so that that's not the issue. But I just wanted to take the opportunity to remind everybody that the CIP projects are always in jeopardy when we waive, you know, water fees and stuff for other developers, and and of course, I voted against the majority of those in the past, and will continue to do so. Because all that happens when we do that is we make this more difficult, and then we end up having to jack up the water fees even more, so we got to put a absolute moratorium on doing that and take our water funds and use them for water projects.
Randy, I, I, when you say that the cost of this has been programmed into the sewer wastewater rates, that doesn't mean the rates aren't going to go up, it just means that the rates that we've talked about, whatever incremental increase, we're not going to have to have a new incremental increase to cover these, but you're not saying that the rates are going to stay the same or anything for a period of years, right?
No, we, of course, we review this annually and is a part of a probably a July work session during the budget process. It will, will come with a utility update for water and wastewater, you'll, you'll even have one with storm water with the city engineer, but we we program rate increases at, you know, a little bit above inflationary rate. A lot of it based on cost of services studies we've done in the recent past. We look at, instead of going through what what we went through, ten years ago where we were looking to expand the plants and we hadn't raised rates for several, several years and doing twenty percent increases, we, we try to stay away from that, and we look at modest increases on an annual basis, so. It's programmed in the forecast for approximately a three percent rate increase on an annual basis. Obviously, with with things the way they are this year, you know, completely understand if we want to take a healthy look at what we're doing with rates this year. Even more so than years in the past, so this particular project itself will not generate a rate increase.
It's already figured into the stair stepping increases that we're going to do anyway, most likely, or you're going to propose to do anyway, so that's what dissolves everybody.
Question. Thank you, Mark. Other questions or comments? Rob and Abdu, would you like to add any other comments to the discussion?
No, I just kind of reiterate a little bit of Commissioner Morris's question, which is in essence, our staff takes wastewater and turns it into trout water, discharges it into the Kansas River. And this bio solids program helps provide fertilizer that grows additional crops. And those, those crops are then fed and sold off to animals and so forth, and we continue that cycle. It's an award winning program. As Randy mentioned, Abdu has been the keeper of this program for a long time, and we have lots of staff that's very proud, and it's been award winning. When we've been competed against other facilities and cities across the state of Kansas. And this helps certainly secure our future as a community to be in compliance. I continue to be good stewards of the environment. To some of the financial questions, just a reminder on page five, the original budget for the combined CIP projects was three point five, and obviously this evening we're bringing you something slightly less than that. Also think of had twenty years ago, had the commission been able to the amount of money that's already been spent in leases, we could have owned this ground, we were to continue that pattern. Again, twenty years from now, we could have owned it, and and that's what we're really asking you this evening is to make a a sound financial decision as well as be good stewards of our environment, so that's kind of my summary statement, and if there's any questions, I'll certainly try and answer them.
Thank you, Rob. Abdu Darar, would you like to add anything else to this, since you're the expert and the one we are so proud of to not only keep us in compliance but doing all of this work behind the scenes, and we rarely get to see you, so. Here's your chance. Anything to add, Abdu? All good? Shy.
Excuse me. Okay, I just want to concur with Rob and Randy about what he just said here. Basically, our method of land application is that it's recycling in its abuse form. The other methods acceptable by by the environmental agencies is incineration or landfilling. It's not really alternative options for us, so we have to stay the course. We've been very successful, and it's the most environmentally sound method of land of disposal bio solid. And I stand by the program and I'm proud of it, and the city should be proud of it, and any help from you will really set the course for more success in this program.
Thank you, thank you, Abdu. I appreciate your comments. Anything else? Yeah, I think this is something we absolutely must do, it looks like it's going to keep increasing, and if we are doing it so well, and I very proud of the work that our staff puts into it, and I think the community doesn't recognize it enough because it is so well done. If there was a flaw or a mistake anywhere in any of these areas, we would definitely know right away. So thank you for all your work, and I think I'm ready for a motion on this project.
Mayor, I move that we approve, that the city commission approve the land purchase agreement with the Mary J. Snegas revocable trust, authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the purchase agreement, SP two oh oh four, CIP number WW one eighty nine P, CIP number WW one eighty nine P. It's the same thing, but approve the first reading of a charter ordinance allowing the city to issue general obligation bonds for wastewater treatment works projects and approve resolution of intent number oh five oh five two oh dash C to issue the bonds once the charter ordinance is effective. And approve an amendment to the lease agreement with the Mary J. Snegas revocable trust and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the lease agreement.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Brenda, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Estabrook?
Yes.
Mayor Ready?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Commissioner Haddasol?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Last agenda, agenda item is accept the CARE Act grant agreement and amend tenant agreements. Jesse Romo, our airport director, will be presenting this evening. Hi, Jesse.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners.
This is good news, right?
This is great news. Just waiting here to upload my PowerPoint. And... There we go. Oops. Okay, so Congress has been passing a series of relief bills, and this one was signed by the President on March 27th of 2020. It does include $10 billion in funding to assist airports in, in relief for impacts that they're experiencing for COVID-19. The, the language in the act itself had some formula spelled out. Others needed to be interpreted by the FAA and then applied, which they did, and came out with a grant offer to us in the amount of $2.1 million. The, the monies, I should mention too, aren't just a, a check that gets sent to the city. This is being processed as a grant. So we did submit a grant application, we did receive a grant offer, and the grant is going to be reimbursable for expenses. So there are some rules tied into the, to the money, where you, you've got several pages of frequently asked questions, as well as about 38 pages of federal regulations says release to airport revenue. So I just kind of bolded it down here to three bullets for you to make it simple. So some of the allowable costs include payroll, debt service, and reimbursement of normal operating and maintenance expenses. So essentially, our budget can be covered by these funds. They have a deadline, or excuse me, a date of January 20th. Anything after that can be calculated and, and submitted into a request for reimbursement. And according to the latest guidance from the FAA, airports are able to offer rent relief to our tenants. And so that was something of great contention and debate for a while there with the FAA on our normal grant assurances, which wouldn't allow that to occur. So what we wanted to do is look at a few ways that we're going to utilize or want to utilize the funds. This one here is regarding rent relief. And so the tenants that are most directly impacted by the reduced air service were identified as our FBO, Kansas Jet Center, which handles all the aircraft for the airline, as well as military and general aviation. Rental cars that we have, Hertz Enterprise, which also have their brands of Alamo National, our food and beverage concessionaire, Bandit Coffee and Cafe, and, as well as the airline. And so for the airline, it would not be, the, the relief is directly related to their lease agreement for the space, so this is like their office space and space utilized in the terminal. We calculated out here, I need to move my pictures around. The monthly impacts of the rent for Bandit, 700 a month, for rental cars combined is about $3,000. The airline's about 1,400, and the FBO is at 5,000. So when you, you look at a three-month rent relief, it would impact us to about $30,000. The other ways that we're looking at the funds, you know, we, we got 2.1 million to utilize, right? So if we look at what's allowable expenses and what we've already expended this year, and then what we have planned for the rest of the year that's eligible, we came out with about $981,000 of operating expenses that we can submit for reimbursement out of that 2.1 million. We also have some debt service that's tied directly into airport revenues. So in the previous slide, the FBO monthly rent was quite a bit higher than the others, and that is because it's tied in directly to the debt service payments for the new FBO facility. So if we were to provide relief on that rent, we would need to continue to make our debt service payments. So less the airport revenue that we've already received and forecasting that we'll continue to receive, it's a much smaller amount than we normally have. We need a remainder of about $60,000 of where we fall short. And then for debt service related to non-airport revenues that is tied into property taxes, it's about $332,000 for the, for the whole year. So if we deduct some of those losses out and expected expenses, we'd get a remaining grant amount of $731,000. If you authorize us to offer the three-month rent relief, that's $30,000. That still leaves us remaining balance of 700,000. And so we have four years to draw down these funds from the FAA. And when you look at our total debt service payments for an entire calendar year is a little over $600,000. So in order to make sure that we continue to cover debt service payments, we can do that even if we reimbursed our, all of our operating expenses this year and offered rent relief to tenants that are most correctly impacted by the loss of air service. And right now, we're sitting, it took us a while to catch up to national trend, but we're at 95% reductions of normal inflaments and, and operations than, that we typically see. And that, like I said, is about what the average is nationwide. So as far as finance or financial impact to the city, it's a, the more we, we spend now, the, the more we get reimbursed, so it, it's, it's a great deal. We get to, to utilize these CARE Act funds, which, you know, we, we thank our, our delegation and Congressman Marshall and Senator Moran for out there supporting this kind of relief effort. So what we're asking you today is to authorize the mayor to sign on the grant agreement to officially accept it, and, and for us to modify some of the lease agreements that we have to offer three months of rent relief to those tenants directly impacted by the reduction of air service.
Jesse?
Yes, sir.
Is, is a three months' worth of rent abatement really going to save the day if we're at 95% reduction? I'm, I'm guessing that in 60 days, we're going to be at 80% reduction, and then six months, it's 60% reduction or something. That, that doesn't seem all that helpful on the big scheme of things. Three months is nice, but if your revenue is going to be tanked for nine months, it's, is that something you've thought about, providing a longer period of time of the rent relief for our tenants?
Yeah, so we did receive requests that ranged anywhere from three months to 18 months on, on rent relief. So it was pretty wide, and at that point, no one really knew what kind of relief they were going to get from other sources. Some of these companies are small, some are large corporations. There's different relief packages for everyone. But when you look at three months at $30,000, it's a good start. It's a great start, and when we don't know what it's going to look like in three to six months from now, this puts us in a position that we can come back and reevaluate and ask you again for an additional time period, if, if it's necessary for, for salvaging the business and, and relationships that we have there.
Okay.
Other questions for Jesse?
So with your, with your plan here, you've got about $700,000 left that you could use for whatever in, in the, in the future to, to include giving them, you know, more rent relief if necessary, or use it for, you know, other debt service, right?
Correct.
Okay. Looks good to me.
Yeah.
Jesse, I had a question. I, the almost a million dollars is for operating expenses, but I don't see much detail about what's included in that. Could you just, you know, do two or three sentences about what you would, what is in less operating expenses, 981,000?
Sure. Yeah, we have a pretty extensive spreadsheet. It's, our normal operating budget is about $1.5 million. And so when you deduct out the, the actuals that we spent from January through the end of March, because at the time that we put this together and, and submitted it for, for this presentation, we didn't have April numbers yet. So when you look at actuals of the first three months, and then you project out how much are we expecting for the budget for the remaining nine months, and then you deduct out the January expenses that we had, that's where the 981,000 is about the, what's left over and eligible from essentially February 1 to 12/31. And so this is just our normal operating budget. This includes salaries, this includes maintenance expenses, includes snow and ice removal expenses. It, it covers all our normal maintenance.
So it is your normal operating expenses. Okay.
Correct.
That's sufficient. Thank you.
Sure thing.
Jesse, you can't put this toward the parking lot?
So one of the restrictions on the funds right now is to not do development. If you do development with the funds, you need to go back to the FAA and request that. And so they take the, the monies out of kind of this fund and shift it over into the rules that are normally established by the FAA, which is the Airport Improvement Program. And so it has different scrutiny, different levels, you know, that you, you have to go through. And at, at this point, even 2.1 million doesn't cover the entirety of the parking project, so that's why we weren't looking at it for, for that purpose right now. So right now, you know, our operating budget is covered about 40% or close to 40% from airport revenues, which means we have a heavy reliance upon general fund. And so for this, and where it's actually reimbursing the expenses of our operating budget, this is giving the city's general fund some much-needed direct relief for this year.
No, I, I agree. I think this is a fantastic part of the stimulus package that, like you said, a congressional delegation has worked on. I, I do agree with Commissioner Haddasal that maybe three months is not long enough. The travel industry is suffering a great deal, and by the time consumer confidence comes back up to where they want to travel again, especially by flight, it's going to take a while. So I think there needs to be three months you have, six months, 12 months, 18 months kind of a plan, because I think that's how long it's going to take for some of that confidence to come back to travel by air. Right now, even by car is kind of iffy, but we don't know where this is going to go. And considering the confined spaces on an airplane, it's going to take them a lot longer to get back into a position where people want to have conferences and conventions and travel to business trips and such. So I, I'm thrilled that this money is there. This is a, a small piece where I wish we had that for each of our departments and for the greater Manhattan in general, especially for our businesses and other sectors. But we will take it, and I think that's, that's the right way to go, and I am glad for the planning you put forth to it, and probably needs to look at that for the next, next year or so. I think that's why they made it so, what is it? So appealing in the short run, because we will have long-term concerns as well. So, thank you.
I just want to, while we're talking a little bit about the parking lot, yeah, I, I don't know where we are in the process of that, but yeah. Yeah, I, I think we're not going to need any more parking for a while, because as long as it took us to get up to 60, 70,000 inflaments, it's going to take us a few years to get back to 50, 60,000 inflaments, I'm afraid. I don't want to be a marquee downer here, but it's, I don't, yeah, that's not something that's going to be a huge priority for me, is adding more parking, because I really don't think we're going to need anymore for a while, a few years, a couple of years, I'm suspecting, because maybe people will start flying quickly again, but I'm just afraid they're not going to. And so that's expanding and, yeah, improving the parking out there is probably not going to be a big priority for me, because I think we're going to have plenty based on the number of flights we have. And, and we'll, and we'll see. Hopefully, I'm wrong, but I'm afraid that's going to take a while.
No, I agree. It was something that we just already had on the docket that we were looking at, and that was the reason I bring it up. But I, I totally agree with you, Mark, on that point. Other Commissioner comments or questions for Jesse?
Isn't the parking at the airport already a done deal? We have approved it. It's, it's under construction. I don't think there's anything else. We, I, I think the whole project is going forward. Actually, from my observation, this is a wonderful time to be doing that project, because if there, if, if the construction company should be able to just make fast work of it a lot faster than even what our contract would have said, because there's, there's so few people there right now. So maybe, you know, life works out in different ways. I wasn't a big fan of parking. I kind of drug my feet, and, but now it's in motion, and I think it needs to play out. So, and with the expectation that our air traffic, our passenger service, and our fixed base operations will, will regain, and I would hope within a year or so.
I just to respond to that quickly. You're, you're correct in saying that we already had a contract underway for the parking improvement project. So that was already rolling prior to COVID-19. One of the things that we had stated when you all voted for that was we were going to come back later this year, in 2020, with a parking management plan. And so that is something that we will come back and discuss at some point. We've already discussed with Walker that we're going to need to reevaluate some of our parking demand forecasts, because forecasts right now are all kind of out the window, and we're starting all over. So we'll, we'll be looking at different scenarios for how that all is going to play out. And so that's a conversation we will be having later on this year.
Thank you.
I, I was just going to comment. So often, we are very critical of Congress and very critical of our delegation and the slowness of how they act. I, I remember when we had a, we had a meeting right before we stopped having in-person meetings, and I had reached out to James Kelly, and he relayed to us, or wanted me to share with you at that commission meeting that night, was the Senator Moran was focused on the airport and not the airline bailout. And here we are, two, two months later, less than two months later, and we're, we're seeing the effects of that. So I think at least once in my lifetime, I'm going to say thank you to the U.S. Senate for acting with quite the, the pace there and getting us pretty much what we, sounds like what we needed in a very timely fashion. So thank you. Really want to give a shout out to them.
And throughout the state of Kansas, I think several, all the airports probably have gotten some fund, some form of funding. With that, is there a motion on this agenda item?
Mayor, I move that we accept and authorize you and the city clerk to execute a federal grant offer from the FAA in the amount of $2,106,072. And authorize city administration to finalize and the mayor and the city clerk to execute tenant agreement amendments to provide three months of rent relief in calendar year 2020 for Bandit Coffee and Cafe, Hertz Enterprise Holdings, and American Eagle.
I'll second.
Great. Brenda, please call the roll. Oh, Jesse.
I'm sorry, in that motion, did you also name Kansas Jet Center?
I meant to.
I, I thought so. I thought that's what we heard. I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, include Kansas Jet Center.
Okay, thank you. Brenda, would you like to call the roll, please?
Mayor Ready? Mayor Ready?
Is Brenda there? Brenda?
Mayor Ready?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Commissioner Haddasal?
Yes.
Commissioner Estabrook?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. One thing I want to say before we adjourn for the evening, this is just for our staff. It's hard to hear from the city commission room on those speakers. So I don't know, when you have a computer, it's easier for us to hear. There's an echoing sound, a muffling sound, and it's very difficult to hear the presentations. So I don't know how we can change that.
Are you? I appreciate that feedback, Mayor. How, is this better? Or is it still muffled?
No, there's still an echoing sound.
Are you getting it on the side from, from me as well?
Yeah.
Okay.
From you, Brenda, and Ron. It's that room.
Yep, okay.
And the mics.
And, and we, we can do things from our own offices, like we do with you all normally, and you could probably hear us okay there, too. So we might have to adjust until we can get back together.
Unless you have the computers in front of you, a laptop in front of you in the city commission room?
We do. We can't turn on our computers and have the mic go through the system. We can't turn on our computers and have the mic go through the system so they can hear us on TV. That's why we're in here, just so all the audio is the same to go out on the TV and Facebook Live and stuff. So, but last week or two weeks ago, I was in my office talking and I think it was much easier to hear on my computer than going through the system. So we can do that.
That would be better. We're missing a lot of key information otherwise.
Okay.
Also, before we adjourn, next week, we are planning to have a work session on the 12th and just want to confirm this will be a work session to review the year-to-date 2020 budget and some of our options we got moving forward, as well as talk a little bit about the 2021 budgeting process. So I just wanted to check to see if you're okay with staying with our regular work session time of 5:30?
Okay, so next week, we are going to have a meeting at 5:30 for a work session.
That'd be our preference. Is that okay with everybody?
I think so.
Yes.
I feel a lot of head nodding.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Send us a reminder, though.
We will.
With that, we are adjourned.
Thank you.